The work session tonight is distribution of council packets.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a discussion item that was brought up earlier about the timing of the agenda packets that you all received in preparation for your Monday meeting. We currently make delivery by the end of business on Thursday, and I know there's been this desire to get that a little ahead of time, so I'm trying to get a feel as to how much time you think would be appropriate lead time to get your packets. I think you have to talk to the staff and look at the requirements that we have to put this up together that it would not be unreasonable for us to get that to you by the close of business on Tuesday prior to council meeting. So forty-eight hours more lead time, I think, is doable now. Obviously, like anything else, there can be some changes that come up, some things that happen that might necessitate a change or an agenda after that time, but as long as we can keep you informed of that and you understand that some things like that may change, then you'd think that's probably a reasonable timeframe to provide you with the packets.
Even with a work session on a night before?
Well, yeah, I mean, that it makes it tougher, and it's why I didn't suggest Monday, because trying to get a packet out and prepare for a Monday work session meeting is just going to be too much for us to do reasonably well. So I think Tuesday is doable. If we struggle with that, we'll come back to you and say, "This really isn't working for us," and maybe Wednesday, but I think we can shoot for Tuesday right now, and if that meets your needs, then try and hold the basket.
Do we have an absolute end time? Because Thursday's a target, right?
I think there is something in the city.
We just, there was a policy set several years ago that basically said that we had to have it out by Thursday at five. So that, we used to kind of vary between Thursday and Friday when we used to get it out, just depending on sort of what the timing issue. Certainly, one of the big things that we need to avoid is Fridays and Mondays, because we tend to have staff out then, so that's why Thursdays will work well for us. You know, Wednesday's fine, but if you try to put it in through the back, then Tuesday you'd be in trouble. Because again, Tuesday, we're still coming off whatever had to happen. Dory does a lot of prep work before the meetings, but after on Tuesday, she has a ton of work that she has to, this is my fear with Tuesdays, that she has a ton of stuff that she has to get out, the newspaper process to get out to people who are waiting on it, and so that could delay if a packet is there, delay her getting to the stuff that the council will follow up from against the meeting. So I'm giving target Tuesday.
I'm giving target Tuesday as well, and, you know, let's give it a fair shake. Sometimes it's tough to meet a new expectation right off the bat, but, you know, the more that you work with it, the easier it is to figure out.
My question is, is Tuesday needed, or would work Tuesday be okay? That's the question I'm trying to ask, is, you know, from an internal standpoint, yeah, we can probably do it. We'll have the leg here to reset ourselves, but again, there's still a process issue with the stuff that the one person that's responsible for prep and wrap-up is concerned with putting them on the same day.
I've not had a problem with getting things on Thursday, so, but if there's a, if there's a majority wants to do it other than Thursday, I'm fine with that, too.
I mean, I, I like to get it as early as possible, you know, new stuff, and the next thing you know is the weekend before you're looking at it, and then, then you have to make time on Monday morning if you want to try and get a question answered, and if you don't...
But, but to me, that's part of our job, to do that.
Sure.
And so, and I've never been able to not get a question answered on Friday or a Monday that I needed to, so I don't have a problem with getting it on Thursday, so, but if the majority wants to do it on Tuesday or Wednesday, I'm fine with that also.
The more time, the better, I, you know, if Tuesday's fine, I'm fine with Tuesday, I wouldn't want to get later after.
Let's go ahead and put that in the ordinance, change the ordinance, what do you think?
There's no ordinance.
There's an ordinance that says that you have to have it out by seventy-two hours prior. Do you have any interest in that?
I would, I would, if we're going to make it Tuesday, I think Tuesday should be a goal, and I think we should leave a deadline, a deadline. I think, I think target, target Tuesday, leave the seventy-two hours as our minimum, because there are issues that will arise.
Can I ask, so Tuesday would be council packets, is that the same time that it would be posted for public, or would that still remain on Thursdays?
We could probably post it as well, because we post it, we try to give council at least a night to review it prior to it going on the website. So we could put it up, post it to the website Wednesday morning, after it goes to council Tuesday evening, or we can post it Friday like we've been doing. I mean, we don't have to change that, it's just, that's up to you all.
I think if we make change to us, then the corresponding change to the public.
Because once it's done, it's on our end, I mean, it's just a matter of time.
I'd still like to see the ordinance changed.
I'm not necessarily against that, but kind of like to see how it works first.
Give it a month, a couple months for a run. We would prefer to start this for the January meetings rather than online, finish out this year as is, and then we'll start this for the January seventeenth meeting.
Okay. All right. Tuesday is a goal.
We will strive to meet that goal as often as we can. The next topic is discussion of the upcoming agenda items, again, based on a conversation with councilmen about what the future holds. I think we've already suggested, and you may be already agreeable to this, staff prepares this internal document that we use for our department heads. We have a weekly staff meeting, this is our guide, this is our agenda, if you will, for our weekly department meeting. And we go through that, and we slot things, and we talk about things that are coming, and then we tentatively, and I emphasize it, we're tentatively assigned a timeframe for that. We'd be happy to share this document with the council, and you will have the same information that we all have that we're operating with about what we see coming in the way of agenda items specifically. You will have to allow us the flexibility to not plan around it and then be angry with us because you scheduled a holiday or a vacation based on a particular item, and then that item moves from one day to another for whatever reason, and then it screws up your plans. So if you'll be flexible with us on that and understand, and that, that happens to us, too, we'll have a time slotted for something, and we'll delete it, or we'll move it up, or we'll move it back, depending on how we're requiring information, or how many issues need to be resolved prior to getting it for council consideration. So if you will allow us that flexibility, that while this is a tentative agenda of upcoming items for the next month or two, that it is subject to change based on things happening. So we would share with this, probably on a agenda basis, I guess we would, sure, moving on.
Mike, this is what you sent us last week.
Yeah.
Now, how far do you usually have these things planned out? I think we got into January with the example that you sent us. How far out does that go?
This particular one that we use for today's meeting goes through the end of February.
But there's nothing in February right now, so, you know, like, there's certain things that we actually printed out the full copy of it, and it goes through the entire year, and we have standing items that you would see that recur on certain meeting days.
We don't think that the standing item issues are anything that you need, because you know that they're going to be there every week anyway, or, you know, they're usually routine matters, but these are for items that are going to appear on agenda that are going to require your discussion and decision-making that have an impact in the city, and we'll try to give you as much notice on those items as we get, and put them forward in this on a weekly basis that we choose.
I would probably do it with just the packets. That's what we intend to, is to have another packet, it would just be a separate attachment, not part of the agenda, but a separate attachment, so that way we know what the next week is. On Mondays, by two or three in the afternoon, we've set what the next Monday's agenda will be for sure, so of course, that's all going to get changed now, because we'll have to change our processes.
I'm curious as to whether or not you do some similar agenda setting with planning officials.
That's all included in the document you received. As, as the VP, we have the information, so, not the electrical, because there's some reasons.
So concerning the emails that come back and forth regarding the executive session, what about that? How does a council member get an item on?
I'm not sure that's what this discussion is necessarily about, but...
Same way we've done it in the past, request an item, and that if it's a relevant item, something we need to put on the agenda, we will. If it's a work session, the city administrator or the mayor sets the agenda.
I mean, I think we're, item four, I'm assuming we're going to talk about this document, and there's some items in there that we'll talk about that? I mean, is that okay?
But by what objection would you have to putting an item on the agenda and then voting, especially just an executive session? I mean, we vote on whether we go to the executive session anyway, so what would be the problem with you putting the item on the executive, as an executive session item, and then having this vote?
What problem would I have with it?
Or any, I don't know.
I'm just following the protocol that, that is you. That's all I'm doing. I, my understanding is, the mayor sets the agenda, and the majority of council people can put an item on the agenda.
Oh, maybe. Does anyone have a problem with anyone being able to put anything on the agenda at the...
Well, that's what we're going to be talking about in item four.
In item four, I don't want to wait until item four, but, you know, that's certainly some issue.
Okay. And that report, that is adequate council meetings. All right.
Item three relates to, I guess, everything that we haven't discussed so far. Council packets obviously have material and information in them on items that the planning commission has sent forward to the council, or that staff has put on there as business items that need to be discussed. This item really is kind of a catch-all for other items that haven't been part of the formal agenda, or part of a report that has come to you from another source, and that is something that we started again, and I hate to refer back to the county, but it's a good reference point for some business processes that I think are done reasonably And they send a weekly memo that's kind of a catch-all for interesting items that don't need council's vote of approval. They send staff reports under that weekly memo, they will send the CIRI monthly report on economic activity under that memo, new bus routes, things that, again, that occur within the organization that a governing body should know about, but don't require a formal vote, or a conversation, or a decision. It's simply about providing information that's current and relevant to your jobs. So we can compose a weekly memo that, you know, a lot of the stuff's going to be innocuous, a lot of it's going to be Christmas in the park, and heads up on other community activities that you may or may not be aware of. It's going to try to be as inclusive as possible, I suppose, with just items that are of interest that don't require formal action when you're part. There's probably another method, if we know that there's a big issue coming that's going to require your deliberation and ultimate vote, that we could probably send you any separate cover memo that says, "Here's an item, it's coming, it'll be here in June, here's what we think it's all about, we need to start preparing for a conversation about it, start gathering background information," so we can do that on an individual basis on significant items. But just to keep you in the communication loop on interesting items that don't require formal action, I think a weekly report might be effective to figure out.
What, would that include, like, I guess, if we're talking about a little report that's just including events that are coming up, Christmas in the park is an example, I mean, I think, at least from my perspective, I'm usually aware of that, we usually have to. The things that would be more beneficial to me would be items that maybe, that each department are working on or looking at, that aren't going to necessarily be a public, you know, event. And I, sometimes I get emails from people that say, "No, I heard city staff is looking at this," or "They're looking at that." Some of the stuff I'm aware of, other stuff I'm not, and I may forward it to somebody and say, you know, "Are you?" And I may get back, "No," or "Not." But, but I think if we had, in my opinion, if we had something that was more focused on internally, here are things that we're looking at, we're looking at things with rental property, or, or, you know, whatever that may be, that way, if we get questions about it, we can at least validate whether that's correct or not.
Okay. That makes good sense.
Yeah, I, you know, I kind of, to reference back to comments I made at a previous council meeting, you know, we had city administrator team that talked about weekly correspondence that they got, and the council member shoot, one of them said that he met council members between each meeting, but...
It's probably why it's still turned off.
Couldn't be. Good. Now, but, you know, weekly updates like we're talking about, but then, as far as departmentally and against budget, seeing them monthly at a work session...
Yeah, I haven't gotten to that piece yet, but we would include a monthly budget printout under this issue, under this item, that would give you the, well, Laura's got it right there.
All right.
So we'd be happy to include budget, I mean, I think you need to know, obviously, about the fiscal accountability of your organization. You need to know that on mid-year, you approximately spent fifty percent of your budget, or if not, one. So, yeah, we'd be happy to provide that as part of it, and what we might do in this weekly memo is just do it by division, City Public Works, Arts, Lions, and then any major topical issues that were coming. It could get repetitive after a while, because a lot of these are long-term. We can do updates, or we can just say, "This is still an item, it's on there, we haven't done much in a week." Make sure to do that.
That's something that we implemented on the U V, and it worked real well. It gave all the board members an idea of the value of electrical work, of electric energy, and it was very informative.
Good.
We'd be happy to provide something like that.
That's also, I think, an ordinance, it's already, I mean, it's in the ordinances that, I think, the city clerk or the city administrator has provided everyone.
You're talking about budget, right?
An ongoing budget versus expenditures.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, expenditures are important to track, obviously, revenues come in, as opposed to the electric utility board, where they got a meter on everything, and it's a pretty steady cash flow. You know, property tax is going to come twice a year, and then it's just a tax fees the rest of the time, so that, that can be up and down, and, you know, I don't want to get misconstrued budget numbers, but, but, yeah, that's, especially tracking the expenditures of this.
Obviously, we have, you know, there'd be some questions that we would have to explain. You all know that in a capital budget, you might buy all your capital in the first quarter of the year, and it says a hundred percent by the end of March, and then you're wondering, "What happened?" Well, if you don't have any more expenditures out of that fund, so you're good to go. Had to buy our equipment early in the year because we needed it, so obviously, certainly the explanations for anything that had questions.
Pool chemicals probably are less expensive in January than they are in July, so...
Perhaps.
One other thing, and I'm not sure how frequently I really allow you all, but we, since I've been here, I mean, we've talked about kind of the performance measurements that each department utilizes, and, you know, I've sat in each department, so I know, you know, like, Public Works, I know that they have a system where they trap calls from residents, and that's how they track their work, and so, but, but, and I know that stuff rolls up to reports and indicators, and I would like to see those, whether it be monthly or quarterly, it doesn't really matter to me, whatever they think is relevant, but I think that's important, that we discuss those, because I think that especially in budget time, when we're talking about, you know, number of employees and things like that, it would be good to have insight into kind of what they're, what they're doing, you know? What is our, our ratio of activity compared to other cities, first of all, but then just internally?
Okay. I think quarterly probably be doable for performance measurement kind of things that we have in the budget.
That's fine, good suggestion.
Okay.
Any more on the side? Okay. Item last is the council meeting communications protocol. As you recall, last meeting, I handed you out a draft approach, policy subsequent to that, with recommendations to look at what the League of Council Municipalities provides, and I've given you what they provide, their booklet, how to procedure. We've also got the handbook for effective meetings. All this stuff is a little bit pricey, so we can get one of these for everybody, but we have a few available for your perusal if you like, at your convenience, and these are just alternatives to what you currently do, and what the draft memo might recommend. Inside this document, it says that Robert's Rules of Order, which is generally used by most municipalities, may not be the most effective tool. It works in some places, but it may not be the most effective tool for municipal meeting management, and suggests that either their code of procedure, or a version of their code of procedure, might be a better way of providing a standardized procedure for meeting, and things of that nature. So that's an alternative. There are as many alternatives as you could perhaps think of that would be prudent ways of going about managing your business. They would obviously follow a similar format that you use now, and that you will see in this code of procedure, which is not much different from what happens now. So it's out there, there, again, you can look at that, you can adopt components of it, you can adopt it with your own ink print on it, if you will, if you want to make changes to some of the items in there that you aren't relevant to this city, or you don't feel are necessary for us to have, and we can come up with our own, that would be an alternative to Robert's Rules, which is currently the official procedure that, that we have. So I brought it up before we hear the conversation and discussion, and where do we want to go from here?
Well, I think a good starting point would be for everybody to be able to read that.
Okay.
Can't, can't discuss it if we know it's ready, then, I think, as long as we can all read it, then we actually have a discussion going for it. This is, this is a good one, but it's pretty short.
Yeah. It's not the be-all and-all, it is a recommendation from the, as a procedure that can be used, but it's not the only one, so...
I certainly would like to read it, but you have...
Yeah, I don't give my heart out to you, the city communications policy that you presented during the council meeting. However, there were things in there that I thought certainly very merit, but perusal of this did not address some of the provisions that you had put in here. This is not, oh, yes, it is, especially when it comes to public comment.
Right.
Especially comments regarding items that are part of the agenda, as the items we consider, you know, whatever we do, that's certainly something that...
Yeah, there's, there's pieces in there that probably aren't in here, that, that might be good practices for us to follow, that, that you would like the city to partner in. So we can mix and match, we can put the elements in there as you collectively decide, and then use that as your guiding procedure.
I would like to hear from each council member, and where their most significant concern is with the way things are, so that as we're looking through this stuff, we can kind of be thinking through that. So I don't know if there's any, where obviously the agenda is setting.
I mean, it's a council meeting, every council member should be able to put an agenda item on there.
Okay.
And if somebody wants to use Robert's Rules of Order, which we've had on the books since nineteen ninety, but have neglected to use, you know, a majority of people can remove that item if they see fit. We've never used, you know, the proper procedure, I guess, for calling for a question, it really requires, I think, four out of five books for the size of the body we have to close discussion, and that would mean everybody except the person that, that is discussing, you know, is continuing to discuss something, I think, is, is better than reading Robert's Rules of Order. So I would like to see us either adopt one or the other, and not try to pull out some things and leave others, because I think we'll end up debating it for a long time, and we'll still be in a gray area as to where, well, I guess we're technically still under Robert's Rules of Order. Maybe Melissa, since she's got a copy of Robert's Rules of Order, can tell us, who sets the agenda?
It says in here that the agenda, it doesn't, I didn't find the specific session on the starting agenda, but an agenda could be amended to or to the council, so...
It can be amended.
Amended in the middle of the...
Right, but there is a provision for who sets the...
I haven't read this, I used it in high school, we've never used it here, it's never been up, I mean, so, yeah, I can dig through it and find it, but, you know, it's not how we operate here.
But again, I mean, even this book, page six says, "Any governing member, pardon, any governing body member or staff member of the city may request to have an item placed on the agenda." And then the section right before that says, "The governing body of the city shall designate an individual to be in charge of setting the agenda." And, I mean, if we're going to use a book like this, then I would suggest the president of the council be the one that sets the agenda, since it is, again, a council meeting.
Well, I, well, I guess I have another question on that, I mean, if we're just discussing. So, so, from your perspective, I mean, are you, when you talk about an agenda voting versus putting it on a work session and discussing it first, are you opposed one way or the other? I mean, because, because, I mean, my personal opinion is, I kind of like, we were in this routine... in this routine where we had a work session, and we would go through everything that was going to be on the upcoming agenda, and, yeah, everybody got to choose to educate. My only fear with a councilperson being able to call the mayor or whoever and say, "Hey, listen, I want this added to the agenda Monday night," is that, okay, you come to the, we come to the meeting Monday night, and nobody really has had a chance to really vet it, except we're in that meeting, and I just don't know that that's the best way either.
Well, I mean, in the case of the emails that have been going back and forth, an executive session would have to be something that could only be during a, a regular meeting.
Right.
So, you know, that should be easy to, to decide.